This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for February 23rd, 2021. Please take notice at the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District in response to the continuing emergency circumstances caused by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Inconsistent with the New York State Governor's executive orders, we will be conducting its scheduled public meeting this evening, February 23rd, 2021, 5:00 PM, to be held via Zoom and streamed via Zoom webinar through our district website. In a moment, we'll offer the public who may be watching the opportunity for comment during public participation. Any members of the public wishing to offer public comments will be allowed to do so at that point. If you would like to do so, we ask you that you go to the chat feature at the bottom of the screen, that you enter your name and address in the Zoom chat, and we will call on you at the public participation moment. We also will remind folks that at 7:00 PM this evening, we are holding our community forum town hall type program where the opportunity for additional more lengthy conversation and discussion will be offered. So if you wish, you may join in at that point also. Now, before we move on to the rest of our evening in our agenda formality, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. McGowan for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Kakanovich. Last evening, late in the day, we were notified that Brighton High School sophomore Joshua Loa was tragically killed in a vehicle accident while away with his family in Ecuador. And this news, of course, is deeply saddening in so many ways. We wish to express our sympathy to his family, of course, his parents, his sister, who is also a student in the district, his friends, his neighbors, and all those who were touched by the life of this wonderful human who was clearly taken far too early. And we want to make sure, one, that we express that sadness to his family and that we will be there for them and his friends and help them understand that as a school community, we will wrap our arms around everyone and do what we can to support them during this terrible time. And we'd like to ask all of you to join us both in expressing that sentiment and our thanks to our staff who did a wonderful job supporting children today and will continue to do so tomorrow. And join us in a moment of silence to think about this wonderful young man. Thank you very much. Mr. Kakanovich?
Thank you, Dr. McGowan. At this point in time, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public who are watching currently are welcome to ask a question, make a comment. Please log in on the chat feature if you haven't already with your name and address, and we will call on you. And again, I remind for those just joining us at 7:00 PM this evening, if you're watching us live on February 23rd, we offer the opportunity for our community forum with the opportunity for expanded conversation on many of the topics of the day. So either way, we welcome your participation. We also remind folks that you're welcome to contact the board directly along with Dr. McGowan through email, telephone, or postal mail at any time. All of our contact information is listed on the website, and please feel free to reach out if you have anything of a concern or a question or a comment that you'd like to share. Dr. McGowan, do we have anybody who wishes to speak at this point?
There isn't. And if I could just remind the attendees, because there are six, actually nine attendees that are out there that if they would like to participate, they can be promoted to a panelist and then be heard on screen. If you just simply type in the chat your name and address, and if you care not to, and if you're just simply here to watch and listen to the meeting, no problem at all, but want to make sure we give you due time to do that. And seeing none, Mr. Kakanovich.
Thank you very much. Then, members of the Board of Education, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. All in favor? Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you. May we have a motion, please, for approval of the minutes from our February 9th, 2021 education meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Sue. Does anyone have any additional corrections, additions, deletions to those minutes other than what we've sent Kim previously? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. That's seven in favor and none opposed. We now move to an item, blueprint updates and recommendations specifically tonight. We're looking at blueprint updates as it relates to budget conversation. So, Dr. McGowan, I'll turn it over to you to start, or?
No, that, yes, that's fine. Dr. Baker, I believe you're going to share your screen for the presentation, which you can go ahead and do that now. And I'll just start by saying, similar to what Mr. Kakanovich said, our full blueprint updates are done quite regularly, and people have heard these reports many times. Our process, though, includes this checkpoint to specifically highlight any potential blueprint recommendations through the work that's happening during the year that would have an impact on budget. So these are not full blueprint reports on the work happening through each of the committees, which, again, people have heard many, many times, and they'll hear hear more as we check in end of third quarter, so to speak, like our report card, and then at the end of the year. But this is specifically to highlight because of the timing relative to the budget process, what would need to be included and what the committees might be thinking about relative to potential spending items. And Dr. Baker, I believe, is going to start those, again, specific to budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks so much for clarifying like what the purpose of tonight is in case people were wondering. Yes. So with respect to budget implications in areas of my oversight, it really is about curriculum development. As the community will recall, we and the Board of Education, we have been over the last few years really focused on shifting our curriculum to be more cultural responsive. This certainly includes not only the what we teach, but the materials that we teach with, the resources that we that we use to do that teaching. And so we really anticipate this work to continue. As you can imagine, curriculum writing is a recursive process. And so consequently, it kind of constantly takes kind of that care feeding modification. And so from a budgetary perspective, we will, we are anticipating an expenditure of around $70,000 this year to support teachers in the summer for this additional curriculum writing. Last year, we shifted, in addition to the cultural responsiveness, to more of a anti, I'm sorry, anti-racist, anti-bias lens, which takes, again, another kind of set of filters and changes that we need to make. This number also includes, for the Board of Education's information, hiring of the or continuing of the hiring, if you will, of the consultants that we engaged this year from the New York Metro Center for Equity and the Transformation of Education. We, they've been working pretty exclusively this year with curriculum council members. They'll be working with the Board of Education in an upcoming retreat and with our administrators, and their work has been invaluable to us, and we would really like to continue that relationship with them and have them push us in our thinking. And with that, I think I'm, Betsy, you're up. Oh, no, Lou, I'm going to turn it over to Lou.
Good evening. So along the three pillars of the hiring practices work recruitment, retention, and environment. We have a recurring cost that's primarily built into this year's budget already. I've identified $40,000. One of the new services is a regional diversity equity service provided by Monroe One Bosse's that we will book participating in. And so that will help us. What I'm thinking is that's going to be able to help us on the environment and the retention practices. My vision for that is being able to partner with the HR directors across the county and develop and implement best practices, best human resource practices, and using that service to help us with that. We're certainly going to continue to invest in our recruiting efforts. Renee Baker has been instrumental in helping us develop a blueprint for that. So this money includes advertising costs and some consulting fees along with that. On the training piece of it, we have standardized with the Everfight product that I previously presented, and that comes with an annual cost of about $5,000, and that will be our standard. And then we'll be committing dollars in-house for dedicating faculty meeting time to continue with that that training effort. Some of those costs will be Bosse's aidable. Again, with this new coaster now, we'll be able to to fit a lot of our costs through that and get some reimbursement in subsequent years. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So I wanted to talk a little bit about restorative practices, and we want to continue our work in the district. As you know, we put a lot of effort into training faculty and staff last year on, you know, community building and academic circles. We want to continue that work, and we want to focus on restorative discipline and training members of our administrative team as well as our mental health team, and also have training through Perry on restorative conversations. And this would also include some PD for staff in the summer as well. The potential and initial investment would be about $9,000, and we get a full menu of services from Perry and just based on what their costs are and the number of people we want to train, as well as the summer PD, that's also included in that number. And we want to continue to implement restorative practices, K-12, and build our internal capacity so that we can keep training our own staff. And, you know, I think that the community building has been so important, not only last year, but in this year, and just building those connections with kids, especially as we've worked through the pandemic. The next area that I have is in terms of mental health and social emotional learning. So we would like to do some professional development for faculty and staff on social emotional learning frameworks and how to implement SEL. We have talked about this a lot in our mental health steering committee, and we will continue to talk about it. I have $3,000 down to allocate to training staff and also possibly looking at a screening tool for SEL. And we want to just try to implement social emotional learning and continue to do that, K-12. It's really, really important, not only for our students, but also for our faculty and staff in continuing to build connections.
And Kevin, I believe that's it. Any questions, Board of Education?
Great. Thanks, everyone. The next step in that process now is for us to consider those within the budget planning process. So those are really worthwhile, valid proposals. The question will be within the spending plan. Can we prioritize that? Do we have the ability to support those? Can we use existing funds within the district and realign priorities and where we're spending to accommodate each of those? That's the bigger budget question going forward. So those are not blank checks. Those are not guarantees. Those are what we are contemplating relative to new spending or potentially utilizing current resources to support those as well. Any questions on any of those?
No, I'd just like to state that they they are of the highest priority for me personally when we think about where we should invest in new spending in the district.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Kakanovich?
Thank you all for presenting, and lots more to come on the individual details. As a matter of fact, starting right now, we're going to move into a budget update presentation from with Dr. McGowan and Mr. Alamo. I would also, at this point, remind members of the public, and we'll do this a lot coming up, that the budget work that we're engaged in currently is intertwined with so many things this year, especially with continuing pandemic learning and planning for next year. But the budget challenges as it relates to funding from New York State and potential federal funding is all up in the air right now. So we, you will hear us discuss tonight at a budget forum next week that I'll get into in a little bit and continuing over the next four to six weeks especially in detail the challenges that we all face. So tonight, we sort of begin in a public discussion much of the detail around building a budget in a difficult time that we're in. So, Kevin, are you going to start on the budget update, or is that going to be Lou?
I'm going to briefly start. Lou, if you could pull that up. There we go. Perfect. So yes, this is not to repeat everything you just said, but this is the next step in the budget process and in reporting out to you where exactly we are. Lou, if you could go to the next slide, please. To quickly set the stage and then to yield the floor to the far more competent financial analysis of Lou, I will say to you that the purpose tonight is for us to give you an update on what our spending projections are. We've done the reconciliation of requests for services through Bosse's and done some updated staffing projections. Now that we have retirements, which occurs earlier relative to our staff who contractually will give us that notice at this time of year, and then looking at our grant chargebacks as well, which impacts that spending on that in that area. We'll give you, be able to give you an update on debt service and the tax levy impact. Also talk to you a little bit about the initial analysis of the executive budget proposal and what we think the local revenues will look like. Remember, the executive budget proposal is the governor's first crack at this. It was done very, very differently this year. We will explain a little bit more about that in his analysis as well. And also finishing up with the final tax cap computation. And for board members to recognize that right after this, as you know, on the agenda, you'll be adopting that tax cap number. That computation is an algorithm given to us. So it's not a debatable, what is the cap going to be? The cap is what it is, but you're required as a board to formally adopt that and for us to send that off to the state. Lou?
Great. Thanks, Dr. McGowan. So just a summary by object here like we did before. So what we have going from left to right is our adopted budget, our current year spending and approves expenditures, and where we were at the preliminary rollover budget essentially last month. From there, we've, as Dr. McGowan said, we reconciled some things. We've looked at our retirements. We've looked at our grants, and we reduced our salaries budget about $500,000. I have not updated the reconciliation for benefits yet, but there'll be a corresponding reduction just from the retirements. And those would be the payroll-related taxes, pension contributions. But nothing really significant would be in health insurance, which is our primary expense in the benefits area in anything that's FTE-based. In Bosse's, we added some spending. We invested in or provided more spots for occupational education programs. That's the EMCC program. We added five additional slots based on anticipated student needs. And then as we were evaluating the technology services, and especially in light of what other districts are experiencing in the form of cybersecurity attacks, we were recommending an additional investment in cybersecurity infrastructure. The sum of those two is about $200,000. Then we've updated our debt service. So our financial consultant, Bernie Donnigan, has reconciled the results of our bond sales and band sales. And I get into that a little bit later, but overall, we've reduced our debt service obligations by $766,000. It's overall about $1 million less from where we were in January, and we're continuing to scrub each month when we close, close the books. We're reconciling our budget to actual and seeing what other efficiencies or managing of the margins that can be recommended at that time. So quickly, debt service. This is where we were at the start of this year. And if you're able to see my pointer, is that working? So we were supposed to rely on essentially a chargeback to the capital project to bridge the gap this year. We weren't able to levy all the taxes. And then over the next couple of years, we are going to slowly build up the taxes so we have stability over the life of the project. What happened this year, and it's a result of our strong financial position, is that we achieved significant significantly less interest rates than what was projected. Part of that is part of the market condition, too. So this is our debt service schedule right now. And what it provides, the opportunity, you can see, there's no drawdown from the capital. So we do not need a reauthorization of spending within the capital project. We can keep those funds in the capital project, finish the scope that we promised to the voters. And we are actually able to make an additional principal payment this year with the savings that we realized with the favorable interest rate market and our strong financial position. So we get up to that stable line, the green line, sooner than what was presented on the on the prior slide. And as a result, over the life of the project, we're lowering our interest expense by $10.6 million, and the overall impact to the net tax levy, $4.2 million. And that's over the 15 to 20 years that the bonds will be. So that's, that's great news long term. And we, I can say with confidence now that we've we're far lower than the tax impact that was presented to the voters in 2017. So that's, that's good news. And this is the last heavy lift of it, and then we have stability going forward, and we can begin to look at a long-range capital planning to keep our investment in capital stabilized. So on the revenue side, so we've scrubbed and continue to scrub our spending side of it, and this is the revenues. This is a plan to or the, so at least the sources of revenue. You could see some of the significant year-over-year differences, sales tax. We were very conservative in building this year's sales tax number, so we will have some budget actual surplus this year that carries over into next year based on what I'm forecasting, considering what the quarterly revenue payments have been so far this year. We've also reconciled and updated the charges per service to non-public. So that's special education services and health services that are provided to our private and parochial schools. And Deanna's office and Jill Millman have done an excellent job identifying and capturing those services. So the business office can cross them out and make sure we're charging back the districts of residence every dollar that Brighton is due. When we get into the state and federal aid, you see a significant increase there, and I go into a little bit greater detail in a subsequent slide. Most of that is in building aid. So we see as our debt payments go up for the 2017 capital project, we begin to see some of the reimbursement. So that's been our strategy all along, is try to marry up the expense with the reimbursement in the correct budget years. Last year, as I just talked about with the debt service, we were relying on a transfer from capital. We did not need to do that this year, providing more opportunity to complete scope in the in the capital project. And I'm looking at that use of reserves piece of that. We still are relying on our retirement reserve for $465,000 and appropriated fund balance of $2.6 million. So as you know, when we talk about that, that is what we try to marry with the risk provisions that are in the spending side of the budget. So if we think health insurance is going to be 6% going increase, we may provide a little bit more to provide for changes in plans types, or if we need to add more staffing due to a mandate or another transportation run, we create those risk margins within the spending side of the budget. The goal is to match the revenue, the financing sources with those risk provisions. And we report to the Board of Education on a monthly basis of how we're doing along those lines. So then the property tax levy, how we balance the revenue budget, 2.85% is the tax levy limit this year. That is calculated in subsequent side, and that includes the debt service. We do have a reduction in the payment of lieu of taxes formerly known as cometa payments. And that's a result of some of the pilot agreements maturing or just otherwise terminating. So overall, we're at a 4.46% in revenue. And looking more at the state executive budget, just a couple of slides on that that I wanted to highlight. What the governor is proposing this year is a third year in a row now of a freeze in foundation aid. So we're at $8.29 million. That's really the only unrestricted, un earmarked revenue to support ongoing operations and inflationary costs of the district. That's been held flat now. This will be the third time. So we've always compared, and we've made strong arguments to the state that we're not getting our fair share in that. This year, we, the proposal would be less than 50% of the amount due to us. Now, our local legislators are proposing a 70% floor, which would be a tremendous help. That would allow us to completely wean ourselves off of any fund balance or short-term revenue sources, and we would have stability going forward in the, in the long term if that base is able to be adjusted. The rest of the state aid or state sources are reimbursement-based. So we have Bosse's, we have our handicapped aides, they're called. And then we have the instructional materials aid, which is the IMA. So that's textbooks, library resources. That's generally based on a per pupil in your spending. So generally, flat, relatively flat there. Transportation is reimbursement for mandated services that we that we need to provide. And then building aid is based on formulas as well. With the desire to implement full-day kindergarten, we are proposing to rely on the full allocation of full-day K revenue, which is $940,000. That will drop off in subsequent years. It's 100% first year, 65% second year, and 35% last year. But if you look at any new money that's coming in, nothing to support inflationary growth, and everything else is only driven based on what we're spending. So no necessarily relief to the property tax levy, which makes our advocacy for foundation aid so critical to continue our advocacy for for foundation aid increases. So some other scary points, and I was very purposeful about scary points of the government. He's playing a lot of games with the maintenance of effort requirements in trying to leverage as much of the federal aid as possible. So there's a lot of talk about the star, star money coming in. That is not part of state aid. It's not accounted for state aid. So I'm not going to really talk to that as much. But we are replying, we are budgeting for the federal money that we expect to be passed through, which is about $3.25 million. The governor has asked for $6 billion. That's included in his base. It looks like the state, New York State, is going to get more than that. So we should, we should be able to secure this full amount, and hopefully there would be some, some more to come through. New state star rules, again, that's very complex in the way they're they're manipulating that. I'm not the expert in that, so we'll have to partner with our town to really understand what the impact of that is. But the most scary part that I want to highlight is the proposal to consolidate aids and create generally a new aid category that would be inherent or would be included, a service aid reduction. So just like foundation aid, it would be a new formula that could be manipulated each year. And if you think about, if I go back up for just one second, you think about all of these two aids here right in the center, which are pretty close to what we're getting in foundation aid. That would be a new formula now that would be potentially be manipulated each year, and there would be service aid reductions that they're already building into into the formula. So the governor can control the cost increases in those aid categories going forward. And like I said, a lot of these in here are mandated services. So while they want to control the growth in reimbursement, there's been no discussion about controlling the growth in costs over the next couple of years. So that is the scariest proposal that certainly the superintendent's group, school boards group, and business officials are advocating to to honor the formulas that are tied to expense-based costs and mandate-driven costs. So again, just kind of going forward, what the service aid categories would be, a lot of which are mandates or other cooperative agreements that reduce costs for for districts anyway. And so what I talked about is the $3.25 million of federal money. This is a slide from, I take no credit for this. This is from West Star Three, our state aid planning consulting services. So this is their caution to the school business officials across the state of the macro state finances. So what the state aid for New York State, $26.7 billion, how much they're relying on in federal aid, and what's going to happen when that falls off and the tax revenue is not there, is not there. They're essentially resetting the base, and that $3.2 million that's specific to Brighton, where is that going to come from in the future? If there's still the property tax gap, if they're still limiting expense-based growth, and there's no mandate relief to significantly curb the the trajectory of our expenses, that's what we're concerned about, and that that's the scariest part of of this proposal and the reliance on the federal revenue. So where we are right now is a, is a budget gap. So from the revenues I projected, where we are in the spending piece of it, we're $683,000 unbalanced at this point with full compliance with the tax gap and no other revenue adjustments, no other assumptions that we would get any more federal dollars. This is where we are right now. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to say, you know, we can balance the budget right now. We are still financially strong. We did have savings last year. We maintained a strong financial position, which contributed to the lower interest rates that I talked about. So we do have, I'm just going to skip over once this one second. We do have the financial capacity to be able to fill that gap this year and outline a long-term plan. So that's something that the Audit Committee has started to talk about. But we do have that opportunity to be able to implement the program that we want to without spending, without making significant reductions to other programs. So that's something we can certainly talk about, and we have the opportunities to do. Going back to the tax gap for just a second. This is the calculation. So later, the board is considering the the calculation. The middle column here is the calculation that will be submitted to the state comptroller. You can see the components of it are the tax-based growth factor, which is set by the state, as well as the allowable growth. as well as the allowable growth factor, which is supposedly the, the 2% growth factor. You can see it's only 1.23%. So overall is the 2.85% with the capital exclusion component generating the most revenue. This is more detailed than you need at this point, but I just want to disclose it for how we calculate the capital exclusion. We look at our debt service obligation, our principal and interest payments. We look at our BOCs contributions and capital. And then we offset it by the state aid, building aid or BOCs aid that's coming in. And so these numbers will reconcile to the tax gap in the future. So with that, and again, the opportunity, the only thing I want to leave the board with and for consideration is that being able to, or being, starting on a path where we're relying on our reserves is a multi-year impact. So we absolutely have the financial capacity to be able to do that. We just need to be mindful of the long-term impact. We know that we're going to have some funding cliffs in the full day K dropping off, as I talked about before, 100%, 65% and 35% in a year. So you could see we're going to have some revenue decreases as we implement a new program. If we were to offset it this year with the $650,000, we plan to spend over the next several years to stabilize that funding cliff. The way I've set up this spreadsheet is as we use the reserves, we would draw down our reserve balances. So we'd still have money at the end of this, but we would need to be disciplined in carving out, carving out any new money that's giving in, at least a portion of it to wean ourselves off of reserves or fund balances going forward. So this is kind of a complex topic, but my point is, my overall point is whatever decision we make this year to use revenue sources or financing sources, understanding that it's a multi-year decision. And then ultimately we have to get back to reoccurring revenues. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. McGowan.
Thanks. So I appreciate that. So our, our next steps in the process are similar to what they are every year. We will take a look right now, and this is, you know, perhaps more complicated than it usually is relative to the pandemic situation. But understanding our budget actual and where we've had to reallocate funds and what that looks like going into next year. Also pointing out to people, I know we'll talk a little bit more about reopening in a community forum tonight and certainly discuss what is on our mind right now as we kick that off. But in the budget process, we're also going to have to keep considering what does next year look like? And trying as best we can to anticipate what types of programs we will need to offer? And how do we provide enough flexibility in a spending plan to be able to accommodate all the different possibilities that there may be? The specific example I would give you is, do we need to offer remote going into next year? What does that mean in terms of our staffing program if we're five days in person? But the state still requires a remote option for families. How will that impact our spending plan? And so those are the kinds of things that we're really dug into now as well. We'll take a look with building principles and other department managers at opportunities for efficiency is always a very important part of our process. And then evaluate what the cost impact is of those reduction strategies. And we'll keep working with the audit committee and all of you on looking at those short-term financing strategies using reserves and what the impact of that is. That's a short-term strategy with a long-term impact. And we'll keep continuing to discuss advocacy and what we can do around the foundation aid picture. Senator Cooney and Assembly Member Clark have been incredible partners thus far as, as early on members in their respective houses in, in terms of introducing this piece of legislation for the 70% floor, but very enthusiastic in supporting our efforts. And we'll be discussing that more with them as well and looking for ways that we can participate as much as possible in advocacy for some type of relief. And you know, this is tied into many shifting dynamics in Albany right now. Not the least of which is the current conversation about nursing home data reporting relative to COVID. The governor's emergency powers, which have been in play the entire time and potential impact on the budget process and the kinds of conversations that we think will be happening. It's a rapidly shifting environment, so we'll see where that leaves us. We do have next week, I think Mark is probably going to mention this in more detail, but a community budget forum as well. And we would encourage people to go into the thought exchange. That link will come back out again tomorrow and then again on Friday. Our budget thought exchange is out there to gather feedback and there's a ton of great feedback already. If you've already been in, I would encourage you to go back in and rate the thoughts that have been added. Rate as many as you can. It really gives us a good sense for what is on people's minds. Not the answers to questions we think to ask, but rather a wide open. Tell us what your thoughts are around the budget process about the spending plan going into next year. And then we consider that feedback along the way also. Mark?
Thank you very much, Kevin, and thank you, Lou. Board members, is there anything specific? Does anyone have a specific question on the material presented at the moment that you would like to ask further of Lou or Kevin?
So it looks like full day K may still be on the table then for 2021.
Yeah, it's definitely still on the table. And so, you know, that's something I want to speak to in a community forum later this evening. This is a high priority for us. So until we work our way through the rest of the process, it is very difficult to throw a stake down and say to people, this is for sure happening. But, but I will say it is a very high priority. It is what we promised the community. It is what we want to see happen. It is why our community invested in a significant increase in the size of the facility at Council Rock. And we recognize the need to give families certainty in that area. And frankly, to move ahead with what we think is a very important programming, important program. The, the importance of that has not diminished in the face of pandemic. In fact, I'd argue likely has increased. And we, we realize that too. So as quickly as we can make that commitment, certainly the final commitment comes when people come and vote. But it's part of an entire spending plan. It's not a vote on full day K. But it, it certainly will be something that we continue to talk about very transparently and publicly. And as soon as we can give more definitive answers to people, we will do that. I'm coming as close as I can without over committing us to saying, we want this to happen. So very, very candidly with everybody, this is what we want to see happen and, and we're working hard towards that.
You, you have been candid. We've been candid and transparent about this. And I, I think it's clear that we all intend that, that to happen at this point in time, based on what we know, based on what we think we can make work. But as Lou articulated, it's clear we have so many revenue issues, more than we have ever had, that are uncertain to us or that are based in one-shot arrangements. That's why Lou mentioned the audit committee, Karen, Larry and myself. And paying really close attention to this, we're going to meet again to continue to review the strategies and then bring that further to the board. We have to be really cognizant of not just next year's budget, but these budgets going out further. And, you know, we'll continue to work. I, I, I think the one thing, we'll talk more about it at the, at the community forum this evening. And Kevin mentioned next week at seven o'clock on Wednesday, the third of March, we'll hold a community forum on the budget with a companion thought exchange that we via Zoom. You know, I encourage folks and we will remind residents constantly, there is a budget tab under the district tab on the website. We will make sure all information, including tonight's presentations, are loaded and available to the community there. Everything that you're seeing this evening is available under the agenda tab for the board meeting tonight. We'll continue to pump that information out. I encourage people to look at the Fight for Brighton Facebook page and those folks. That group has been, been great partners with us. We worked together on advocacy for a long period of time. They've put together a lot of new updated information for the community to try to continue to explain why we have a Brighton problem in addition to a New York state problem for all districts and how that burden has shifted over the last few years. We'll continue to work with them. We'll continue to do the advocacy work Kevin mentioned. Not only our own advocacy, but through the Monroe County School Boards Association with Sarah Clark in the Assembly, with Jeremy Cooney in the Senate. We are also reaching out to Sombra Brooke in the Senate from neighboring Pittsburgh area because she is on the Senate Education Committee. We're working with the chairs of the education committees in Albany. We're working with other representatives from around the state who are involved at higher levels of decision-making that we think might be able to help us. That continues to be an ongoing issue, but it's, it's, there's really never, and I would say in 10 or 15 years, we, we've not faced the uncertainty in multiple ways in terms of state revenues from the state federal government also that we have right now. So.
Which considering the last decade I've been involved in our budget is really quite a statement to make, considering the uncertainty we faced in the recent past.
Every year, really, but currently it's, it's, it's just, you know, a factor of, of so many things, Karen. And again, our aim and my aim personally is to make sure that we are as transparent as possible to the community and that we provide resources to every member of the community who asks the question. It doesn't fully, they haven't been around the whole time. And even if you've been around and paying attention, this, who's got the capacity to keep this in the forefront all the time? So that we can direct them to that information so that everybody is at least on the same page and understands what we're discussing as far as the challenges that we face. So much, much more to come on that.
I do want to make this comment while everybody trains their eyes on Lou's forehead, if we can see beads of sweat via Zoom as I say this. I think what we're probably going to be moving you towards, and you, you gestured at this, Mark, is a conversation where we are able to at some point to commit to worst-case scenarios and say, okay, here's the deal. If we use these financing strategies, then we can accomplish X, Y and Z, be under the cap at full day kindergarten, et cetera. With the hopes that we don't have to use all of those financing strategies because more state aid comes or something, you know, else is, is derived revenue-wise or there are other changes, et cetera. But, you know, I, I don't want to leave people with the impression that these questions will go unanswered all the way up until the budget vote. We're going to have to at some point put, throw down the gauntlet and say, okay, right now, these are the ways that we can finance this and make some decisions early on. And then hope that as this process continues with the state, that we get better answers. And that may very well stretch longer than usual because of the conditions in Albany. And so we may have to make decisions based on what we know at the time. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Much, much more to come. Next up, we have our reports section for this evening. Item number seven A, our financial report section. Board members, you'll notice that that report section tonight contains three separate reports. There is a budget status report dated February 2nd from Lou. We also have the student activities fund update, the summary update, October through December. We also have the treasures report provided by Lou and also Dahlia Watts, our Director of Finance, with the period ending December 31st, 2020. I, I will make it, we've had a chance to take a look through those. I don't have any questions further. Certainly if any board member does, we can ask right now. I will make note, the community understands this a little bit better. Lou makes note in the budget status report dated February 2nd, that as of that date, our food service system is operating at $160,000 loss. Now, this is not unusual. Every school district is facing this, obviously with fewer people in buildings, fewer lunches are being purchased and meals together, if you will. And, but I do remind the group that this is something that, that we do have to deal with because school lunch programs cannot run at a loss. So that's another challenge that we'll have to deal with here as we move forward. And Lou is well aware of that and reminded of that all the time too. And does anybody have any further questions or comments on those reports? If not, then I'll entertain a motion, please, to receive those financial reports.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Sue, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's seven in favor and none opposed. Next up, our student representative report. Stella, we want good news from Stella on behalf of the students this evening.
Hi, everyone. So this month, it feels like there's been a lot going on for the students. Right now, some sports are finishing up and some sports are starting, which is a little bit confusing, but definitely really exciting. And I hope that every student athlete gets to have some sort of season. And I think the administration's been doing really well with that. With these sports occurring, new questions about student activities have been raised. For example, a lot of students are wondering about music groups like orchestra, band and chorus and in-person club meetings. Since we're right now, a couple of weeks into the third quarter, I think people are starting to wonder about our end of year events, like AP exams in particular, final exams, dances like prom and ball and other senior events. The seniors actually just got information about what the end of the year is going to look like, which is super helpful. So thank you, Dr. Hall and the administration. Right now, we're also excited about the newly renovated auditorium opening up. I haven't personally gone inside it, but I'm definitely going to go check it out soon. And I want to shout out the counseling department because they've been really amazing this year. The underclassmen have felt a lot more confident and a lot more informed about picking their courses for next year because the counselors were able to schedule individual one-on-one meetings, which I think is a really helpful process and maybe we should keep using it in future years. They've also been giving the seniors a lot of support for next year from scholarship opportunities to job applications. When it comes to safety, I think we're all still doing really well with wearing masks. And I'm hoping that we can keep our numbers way down even after coming back from February break. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Mr. Cavis, can I just follow up with something? Stella, can you tell us a little bit about that banner over your shoulder?
This one?
Yeah, the brown one.
Yeah. I'm going there next year. I'm really excited.
Congratulations. Just want to point that out. And I did want to say to you, just for students sake, yes, Dr. Hall and the administrators at the high school have been doing everything they can possibly do to try and figure out how to do more events, more things for seniors and, and sort that out. Just a quick comment for you on AP exams, region's exams, et cetera. Information is kind of trickling out today around the potential for some regions exams to be canceled if possible. Some will take place. As I told Dr. on some administrators in an email a little while ago, we've got to hold the phones because it's wrapped up in a lot of political controversy nationally. Because the way those exams are associated to federal spending and funding of schools to the limited degree that they do. But the other issue on AP exams is that they can be offered in multiple ways. And we're trying to sort out with every exam, what makes the most sense for our kids to give them really the fairest opportunity on those tests. So those are things that are a little bit out of our control, but that we're trying to figure out as quickly as possible. So I'm glad you brought them up. So I could say that for other people in here too. And again, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the update. We certainly appreciate it. Our Board of Education reports, the Monroe County School Boards Association, our standing committees, labor relations. We last reported out on Ju, January 19th. There was a labor relations meeting, I believe on January 20th. Jerry or Larry, did you attend that meeting?
I did. It was on workforce availability, Mark. We had some of the HR leaders from Fairport and Webster, as well as someone from Harris Beach. You know, it went through a number of issues that we've certainly talked about at previous board meetings. How are we accommodating the staff, whether it's medical leaves, the anxiety the staff has perhaps about being with students? Also, some of the issues they might have at home, whether their daycares are closing. And then of course, all of the issues associated with remote versus hybrid versus in-person. So good discussion. I, I don't think it's good news or bad news that everyone's sort of experiencing the same challenges. And quite frankly, you just sort of, I mean, this, this, this goes to Kevin and the entire team. You just sort of work each individ, each situation individually, rather. Look at what the circumstances, what needs to be done, and then how do we accommodate? And we'll know, we've seen a number of occasions where our staff has done a great job of teaming. When someone needs something perhaps unique, others have picked up the slack for a period of time. So good, you know, good information, I think, good sharing. I don't want to call it commiseration, everyone sort of identifying the issues they're having and then some of the solutions. And as a logical follow-on, Mark, our next one is tomorrow lunchtime that I'm signed up for. And that's going to be negotiations, right? Union negotiations in a, in a COVID-19 environment. And we'll be addressing those issues I just talked about. Again, to sort of see what's the status of different folks doing negotiations and things like that.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. That's right. I did have that tomorrow, tomorrow at noon. And we'll get to information exchange now because information exchange is tomorrow at four. For those of you that have signed up, you know that. Information exchange hasn't met since the last time we reported out, but tomorrow's, tomorrow's session is on impact of COVID on students preparing for college. Which should be interesting. I know, Jolene, you're probably, are you signed up?
Yeah. We've got representatives from Brockport School District, SUNY Brockport, Victor and RIT talking about, you know, the, the, the side of student, current seniors and the college perspective. So I think it'll be interesting. And I, I know how concerning it is for families, but all the kids are in the same spot. So there's an equalization that's happening and colleges realize it as well. So it'll be interesting to hear what they say, but I think that it will be reassuring rather than alarming.
Yeah, I think I, I believe that to be the case too. And I, I do know that part of the planning was talking about this year and ended the next year because students have now, will have now been affected for X periods of time, right? Students have now, will have now been affected for X periods of time, right, as the college planning process goes on. And that is at four o'clock tomorrow.
Four o'clock tomorrow on Zoom.
Great, thank you. And Legislative Committee, we met on February 4th. And we met, that day was with our legislative group, sort of instead of the legislative breakfast in person. We met that day with everybody on Zoom. Karen, you attended also. Would you like to update on that?
Sure, we had eight representatives, all of whom were new to me, although we've met with Sarah Clark and Jeremy Cooney in the past, so I was familiar with them. And a number of their aides, and I have to say, it was the most. Useful meeting I've ever had with any of our elected officials. They were overall. Better educated about our issues that schools face in general, including our deep funding issues that we experience across Monroe County and the state. They were transparent with us, far more than I have seen in the past. I don't think I heard a single platitude. From either party. It was really very much bipartisan support and understanding of the. Financial issues that schools face. I was almost open-mouthed in my amazement at how different this was. From the legislative breakfast I've attended in the past, where we have very little time to interact with legislators and they seem. They and their aides seem largely surprised at our discontent with the funding issues. This was night and day compared to that. And overall, I would say that they were united against. The idea that the governor would backfill aid with the federal support. And they were very much united in their belief that we should not consolidate the aid categories. They did express that they would work towards seeing the governor change his mind about those things. And, and of course, the news that Sarah Clark and Jeremy Cooney have actually sponsored a bill asking for a floor of 70%. I, I don't have a lot of hope they'll pass 70%, right? I think they've started with a big ask and hope that we'll get somewhere with it. But I can't even imagine what that would do for our community and other community.
What a tremendous benefit. We'll talk more about it because it would be a tremendous benefit. There is also. Conversation around the state that maybe 60 is doable, 70 would be great. The truth of the matter is the districts that would be affected and helped by 70, the dollars are still a drop in the bucket in the state budget, and. It would be so beneficial to all of us, but you know, I echo your sentiment and to all the people on this Zoom tonight listening. We have a really brand-new group of folks from central Finger Lakes, even into Western New York. That are in the Assembly and the Senate, hugely, a big turnover, mostly new people. Not just young, but they're varying ages, varying backgrounds. But what an enthusiastic group. They've been really open to learning about education issues. We really have harped with them through School Boards Association on things like the expense-based. The consolidation of those aids that Lou brought up and how horrific that would be for all of us in the long term. And the foundation aid, they certainly understand and get. So it's a great group to work with, enthusiastic. The difficulty in Albany is the same in any political arena. When you're brand-new, you don't have a lot of pull yet, so there's hope that these folks can group and work together. Around these issues and bring some, bring some real action to some of the issues we've been fighting for so long, so. It was, it was a invigorating discussion. Karen is correct.
Freshing at the very least.
Best discussions we've had with a group of elected officials in a long time, so.
I just want to point out, I mean, two really important factors. So 10 seconds, I promise, because this is going to come up throughout the budget process. This expense-based aid issue is really important for people to understand what we're talking about. In this, in the system of funding schools, that is the state's responsibility, right? These aren't gifts. This isn't like, oh, we're going to help you out. That's the state's. Job constitutionally to provide a free, appropriate public education. They set these categories up to fund people's spending, whether it was on transportation. Or on high-cost special needs students, et cetera, to level the playing field. So for example, if you're in the Arondex and you have kids who are going, you know, 50, 60 miles to and from school. And you're driving that many miles and you have a particular cost to that, you should get extra help to pay for that because there's no way your community. Should have to pay that differently than the community right next door where they're, for example, going a mile to school, right? So it was designed to match the spending a district does. So that things would be equalized across the entire state. So the idea that you'd get rid of that system. Creates an inherent inequity and an ability to politically manipulate the formula. Like the foundation aid formula has been manipulated. This is exactly the problem. And it gives the governor and legislators, but largely the governor, the opportunity to do that in a very non-transparent way. To have that political power to control the dollars based on regions and shares. Differently than the most transparent way you can do it for taxpayers, which is based on spending. And the governor will phrase it to people as if there's a blank check. The people have abused it, that I think last year he called it a credit card. It's not a credit card. We're not out, you know, taking the extra trip to Macy's. This is. Miles driven to get kids to school and reimbursement for that. So. I think like, it's really important for people to understand how that compares to your household budget and why that makes such a difference. 70% would be incredible. 60%, though, the second point, then I'll stop and hit mute and be done with my therapy for the night. 60% gets us to a balanced budget, full-day kindergarten, without having to use some of those funding strategies. And that's only 60% of what people are doing. Anything more than that, and we can start to talk about really rebuilding financially and in very important ways. For the long term. So thank you very much for letting me add that to the presentation.
Hey, no problem, anytime. You're controlling the screen, so. Thank you. Next up, our BOSI's report. Our BOSI's representative, Sora Sax, submitted a report to us. That full report will be in the minutes for everybody to take a look at, but a couple of quick highlights from it. A lot of things are going on at BOSI's. Obviously, they're affected in some of the same ways and in other more challenging ways under COVID learning. One of their concerns that they're really working through are the career center programs and. Worries around licensing requirements, things like EMTs and cosmetology, and trying to figure out a way forward on that. Reduced internships, reduced co-ops, things like that. So they may need to do some summer work to get that. Completely fulfilled, fulfilled, if you will. They're also looking to expand. An enhanced model of instruction that they rolled out. That integrates support in a classroom while reducing some of the aids that they've used. They've done it at Bird Morgan, and now they're moving it over to the O'Connor Academy. So. That's from Sora, and that full report will be in our minutes as we move forward. Other board member reports, board members, anything that you would like to share in terms of some individual activity? Since our last meeting a month ago?
You know, Mark, you and I and Karen obviously talked about Audit Committee. It was referred to earlier. Addressing a number of issues. Kudos to Lou and Dahlia and that team. And Lou sort of hit upon this in the budget, some of the costs around better cybersecurity. Most people have at least a passing knowledge of what happened in Victor and some of the challenges they've had there. That was one of the discussion points we had, certainly in Audit Committee, what are we doing to be able to prevent that? We do have, as Lou pointed out in the budget, dollars allocated to make sure we're as robust as possible in some of those situations, so. We'll be running through some of those things. We also talked about the food service. I think Kevin hit upon that as well. Which is, we're still getting meals to people in a really tough environment, so I'm proud of the district for what we're doing to try to sort of get there. And the other piece, and with your permission, Mark, I'll sort of branch over to buildings and facilities. We obviously looked at some of the overages and some of the additional costs that have been incurred because of the overall facilities improvement project that started a few years ago. In case people weren't aware, there's some buildings we're working on in the district. And getting through some of those things. I will say this, just jump into the buildings piece of it. We're in the homestretch, and the next six months are going to be critical to sort of get us past the finish line, as it were. Couple of examples where we're going to start to see that with a lot of the project done. Like for Dr. Hall and the high school, certainly. By the beginning of April, we expect to have the science rooms done, but in between now and then, some of those teachers. Are going to have to pair up and shore up and sort of share some space in the short term. Might create a little bit of short-term pain, but the science rooms on the other end of that are going to be spectacular, so very excited. About what we'll be able to deliver as part of that. Obviously, Council Rock and Principal Tappan and his team, we're moving along there. We're going to start to see some trailers pick up. And move out, and that's going to start to happen. There's still work that's going to take place right through the summer to finish off some of the site work. But you're sort of seeing at least two-thirds of these projects are done. I think Stella referenced the auditorium. It's fabulous. And it's just going to be a great facility when we all get back to how we were for the kids to perform, so. A lot of work yet to be done, but a lot of it's past, and you're going to start to see some of that. Again, in the next couple of months, a little bit of short-term pain in the high school that I'm certain. We've got A-tracks or day shifts in some cases, mid-evening or B-shift tricks happening in some places. So still a little bit of mess to work through for the rest of this school year, but really on the other side, the outcomes are going to be outstanding, and I know the community's going to be very proud.
Fantastic. Thanks for the update, Larry, on both those areas. We appreciate that. We're all getting, looking forward to being able to physically walk in and see everything at our leisure, right? So, thank you. Other board members, committee work or activities that you've had? Andrea?
Yeah, so I'm on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Group. Led, my subcommittee is led by Deanna Spagnola. We are working on student engagement. And we've got an exciting survey that we're preparing. It's probably. Inches away from being done, that students as well as parents will be getting. Believe three, three, third grade through. Senior. And, and it's just talking about what, what types of extracurricular activities. You, that they're involved in, what they would like to be involved in, what obstacles may, we may be finding. That they, and reasons why they're not engaging in these. So that should be coming out soon. And next week is Curriculum Council.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to? Add to the conversation? Okay, then, we're, I will add one quick thing of the things that I'm doing. Still doing all of them, just Zoom, right, like all of us, but. I do want to make a point that Safety Committee, District-wide Safety Committee, which I sit for the board on, we met on, on February 3rd. Lou put that together as always, and what a great group of folks that that is, and I just wanted to reassure. Members of the public and certainly anyone, all of our staff and folks here tonight. That everyone around that table, we reviewed current protocols, what's working, what needs adjustment. And under the pandemic learning on top of all the other things that we're working with. And it was a great go-round with everybody weighing in, and I remind folks that all building leadership is represented. All of the emergency services in Brighton are there and they come and they're represented. And so we had a great conversation updating that, and all of it references back to the district's safety plan. So that was, that was an effort to update everybody on that, so. Then we will move on to the Brighton Teachers Association Report. We welcome Nicole.
Hi, how are you? So lots of fun things to share. I hope you enjoy them as much as some of the smiles I got. I don't know if you've been able to look at any of the pictures or the videos. But they were a lot of fun. At Council Rock, Mrs. Oravec, who's a hybrid teacher. She has students on their independent learning days working on embracing winter. And it's, last week, we really did embrace it. So they've been doing different things, building snowmen, building snow forts. She's having them look at it from a STEM perspective and plan, predict, reflect. And then share their creations with each other on seesaw. Mrs. Files and Mrs. Baker, who were two of our virtual first-grade teachers, they have started poetry. And their most recent poem is based on the book, I Am Every Good Thing, and I don't know if any of you are able to walk through the building. But I know Mrs. Files has hung hers up, and what you do is you celebrate. The students celebrate themselves, so they pick a part of themselves that they want to share. And what's, what they think is their best self, or their best part. And then write a poem about that. They're going to add it to a digital portfolio and then have a poetry, a virtual poetry cafe. In March with the families. This one sounded amazing, and I'm hoping maybe Mr. Tappan was able to pop in on these. So Mrs. Yaman, who is teaching first grade science this year. She sent home a kazoo for all first graders. And they did some discovery and learned that the paper that's in the funnel is what creates the kazoo sound. So they did a lot of playing with that. Well, once Mrs. Button, who's our music teacher, found out that that's what they were doing. She decided to teach her music lessons with the kazoo. So she taught them high pitches and low pitches. They composed songs, they played together, they sang them. And really just had a wonderful time singing and audiating, which is. Hearing it in their brain, but the great thing was they connected the music and the science together. Pardon me. In Mrs. Tisa's remote kindergarten class, they are studying citizenship and responsibility. So they created a valentine for a senior member of the Brighton community. And Mrs. Tisa collaborated with Sarah Salerno to deliver them. Oh, I'm sorry. And they also celebrated a Valentine's Day party, so if you can't see those photographs, they're amazing. Of all the kindergartners wearing Valentine glasses, heart glasses, and sharing a snack. Pardon me, I was going to drink water. At Fraz, Mrs. Shank's third graders are writing opinion essays, working on developing hooks, adding persuasion. Some of the topics that they focused on are why you shouldn't cut down trees, why you should rescue animals. And I don't know if Dr. Rio knows this one, but why they want to be principal for a day. So third graders would like to job-share, I think. At 12 Corners, in eighth grade science, Mrs. Ward Roth. They are finishing a unit on the uses, power, and applications of fluid forces. So they made a competition out of making boats with aluminum foil. Seeing how many passengers they could get on their boat. They had a great time. Because they were able to do some application of science. And they not only did applications of buoyancy, but also density. So she really wanted to share that. They revised their creations and tried it again. What Mrs. Ward Roth said was how much fun the students had. They were laughing, cheering each other on, trying to improve and help each other. And how much they just love being in the classroom. She wanted to make sure that. She shared that how grateful she is that they're in person, talking, thinking, and working together, and how much they love lap days. Mrs. Kogle, and I hope I pronounced that correctly. Her remote classes celebrated World Read Aloud Day with an author visit from a young adult author, Keely Hutton. Who's the author of Soldier Boy and Secret Soldiers, and she read some of her chapter books to students. She talked about her process of writing, the research, because she's doing historical fiction. Where she finds inspiration and that she said the kids just loved it. In eighth grade band, there are three pieces recorded for a virtual concert. The first one, which is the US Field Artillery March, which you have a link to. Honors the band's own family members who served in the military. All branches were included, spanning over a century of service. And the band is taught by Dr. Fisher Croni with Mrs. Lamb and Mr. Meyer, so hopefully get a chance to watch that. In sixth grade, social studies. So the Mrs. Falter, Mrs. Camps, Mrs. Parks, Ms. Whipple, Mr. Telex, and Mrs. Telex. They are wrapping up their peer professor flipgrid presentations, of which there were more than 100. I believe, and students created flipgrid presentations. They picked an ancient Egyptian topic and then made a flipgrid. They shared with all the other social studies students. And really just enhanced their technology skills. And she mentioned that they are just getting more comfortable with technology and more comfortable with. Being able to share what they are creating. There were two projects that were attached, one by Charles about mummies. And one by Neela, who is, shout out, one of my previous students, on Egyptian medicine. So you can look at those, and I believe there's a link to all the rest of them in there. Extended Studies, sixth grade students in Miss Coyle's class learned about brainstorming and inventing. And they actually had two inventors who developed the MIMO baby monitor. So Dulcie Madden and Thomas Lepoma actually joined. Um, so Dulcie Madden and Thomas Lapoma actually joined them and um. They talked about how they developed this invention um, at MIT. And took them through the process all the way to production and how it's uh, delivered to stores. Um, so students learned about brainstorming, development, financing and distribution. They're going to be brainstorming their own inventions to submit to RIT. Um, who's going to work with them to help them take the next steps of their process. Um, Mr. Lapoma actually asked for their advice. His next um, invention that he's working on is a backyard Zamboni. Um, so students gave some good tips for him and you can see um, a photograph of the Zamboni project and some of the students helping him there. Um, our last submission was from Dr. Smith at the high school. Um, who, and I think there's a something to do with beavers and a mascot, which I won't comment on, but he definitely wanted me to include the beaver, um, the Brighton Beaver, wearing the Brighton or Brighton Beaver mask, um, or Brighton mask. Um, so he created a unit on engagement on racial justice and environmental justice issues. And, but he did it based on land use and on beavers. And if you have a chance to look at it, it's actually really fascinating about the history of the beaver. Especially in relation to New York State. So he definitely did his research. Um, and that's what I've got for this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nicole. And I will mention that Dr. Smith early on did suggest, have some suggestions about the beaver. And we all did notice that link and have seen that and it is quite entertaining and well done. So, and thank you again for including all the links that you do in your report. They are very enjoyable and allow us to really visit without visiting. So the best we can. So thank you very much. Our PTSA report, Eleanor is with us this evening. I believe Eleanor, you're going to report out?
Sure. Thanks, Mark. Um, I have a few things from the PTSA. Uh, right now we are collecting applications for the PTSA Lifetime Membership Award. Uh, the link is off of the PTSA webpage. It's also on the report. Which is under the agenda on the Board of Education site. Applications are due by April 4th and then there will be a cer- virtual ceremony in May for all of the award winners, which again is probably going to be on Zoom. Um, the selection committee for the David Beck Awards is going to be meeting with um, them after break. And so probably this week or next and should have the status of award grants out to teachers and everyone um, by the end of the month. The PTSA are also looking to have Debbie Baker presented a future meeting on the district's new DEI webpage. And talk about the work that the district is doing, similar to the wor- um, what was reported out tonight. And also plan to hopefully have Betsy Balling do, Balling do a follow-up mental health meeting, um, closer to the end of the year to just sort of talk about more. Um, that was really well received earlier this year and we kind of want to repeat that. There's been a good request for that. Um, the PTSA has also been given the go-ahead to start planning end-of-year outdoor activities. Building chairs are super excited about all of this, as well as working with the principals to you know, be as creative as possible. So the kids can have some kind of fun outside with each other um, in some way, shape or form. They're hoping to do something for the seniors, um, like was reported out earlier, uh, senior parade, food truck rodeo potentially. We're really just keeping our fingers crossed and you know, if you have any great ideas, touch base with your building chairs in the PTSA and they are looking for help and ideas. Um, last thing, uh, no, a couple of other things. The PTSA also will be sponsoring lawn signs for all graduating seniors again this year. So those, look for those coming out in the lawns in the near future. Um, and then, cause spring is going to be here before we know it. And, and there will be a virtual festival ideas. It's going to be called Brighten Your Mind. Um, they're going to be sending out some resources for vendors and to challenge families to pursue something new on those days with their family that will help brighten their mind. New recipe, a hike and a trail, new board game, um, take a few pictures and send them in. They're going to be doing a social media post. Stay tuned for more information around that. And then also, as I announced last month, they are looking to do um, a new, a second um, spiritware sale for wanting of the new logo so that people can wear the new Brighton logo and with pride around school. And I think that's about it from the PTSA.
Wonderful. Thank you again for the update. And again, our continued thanks to PTSA for the innovative uh, ways that everybody's tried to provide programming and use of virtual world and uh, new ideas and continue to try to make it work and be flexible as, as you folks go. So thank you to everybody involved with PTSA and continuing to try to serve everyone as best as possible. So. Uh, Dr. McGowan, superintendent's report. Or do you want to save the thunder for the community forum?
The thunder is a way to put it. So I, I don't have any report right now in addition to what we've talked about relative to budget, but this evening at the community forum. We'll just give a brief perspective at the beginning on reopening. And then the other things that are on our plate relative to budget, again, very briefly. Uh, diversity equity work and kind of the ongoing day-to-day things. But for the most part, I'll really give an overview of reopening relative to CDC guidelines. And what is, I think, a very confusing conversation in public space throughout the country and how that applies directly to us in both the state of New York, but the county of Monroe as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And that'll be coming up at seven PM. Again, to remind those who are with us live this evening. Uh, next up we have, uh, I'm going to ask a district or district board members for a motion and then we'll have some conversation. But the item is number eight on our agenda this evening. It's a resolution uh, for consideration of sale of district property. Uh, may we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by, I heard a couple of different voices. Christina, did I hear you? No?
Andrea.
Okay, Andrea, thank you. All right. Now, conversation, discussion. First of all, as way of explanation. Uh, this is a resolution that relates to the Brookside School building and property. And um, what we're asking the board this evening, what the board is being asked this evening. The approval of this resolution would uh designate the property known as Brookside, uh, that we are not currently using it. It is not considered for future use. And we are authorizing the necessary steps to take any necessary action to pursue the possible, the possible sale uh, or transfer of that property. And we uh by the re- uh, approval of this resolution triggers a process, a legal process to go about exploring the possibility of selling that property. Dr. McGowan?
Well, you said it best. So I will simply reiterate that the motion is simply asking the board to authorize us to move ahead in the process of discussing this possibility. Um, yes, it is in reference to Brookside. It is not a motion asking you to authorize the imminent sale. It is simply allowing us to continue along the process of uh, negotiating and discussing that as a potential um, opportunity that we would come back to you to discuss further, to inform the community further. And then ultimately would need your authorization uh, to enter into an agreement to do that. Um, by way of very brief background, which we would explain again in further details, we would get closer to this if it was uh, to happen. This is not something that we had uh, been planning on. Go back a few years ago, several years ago, when we explored the potential use of Brookside in the redevelopment or the development of a full day K program, but looked at it in all sorts of different ra- ways relative to um, doing an entirely new building on that parcel. Adding just a, an early childhood center. We looked at all different possibilities in, in that is, as a, as a building that could be used by the district. We don't take the um use of an asset lightly in any way, shape or form. We think very deeply about potential long-term uh, impact on neighborhood, all the different aspects of what would happen and, and the current programming within the building that includes the Montessori School, of course, of Rochester. Uh, programs with Jewish Family Services, Monroe County School Boards, and of course the Senior Center, Brighton Recreation and Brighton Ambulance as well, um, in terms of people using the building and the district use of the building. Um, also, we have informed each of those who are um using the building right now, uh, those with leases and those without of what uh, this potential could be. And uh, discussed uh, with them, you know, that you'd be acting on this motion tonight and made sure that they were not finding out about this secondhand. So. That's the current status. We'll keep uh, everybody informed. Uh, but there, there is not something happening tomorrow. And uh, this is just allowing us to continue the steps in that process. And again, as I mentioned, this was certainly unanticipated, but could provide an opportunity for the district in thinking about the overall financial picture. And we do know, especially since we have now invested significantly at Council Rock. That this building is not one that we would be utilizing going forward uh, for a program, um, for a district program. And so uh, it's certainly incumbent upon us to think from our fiduciary responsibility, um, in terms of what this, uh, what the opportunity could be.
Thank you very much. Uh, does anyone else have any questions or asks of Lou or of Kevin on the uh, resolution? And again, we reiterate for members of the community joining us, we will uh, this is a potential situation. This authorizes the district to go forward and explore a possibility. It is not approval of anything with regard to a sale. And we will bring more information forward to the community as soon as we're able. It will be fully transparent about that as we are able through the process. So. Uh, if we have no other comment or question, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you very much. Item number nine on the agenda, a motion, please, for approval of the estimated tax cap levy limit.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Sue. As Lou described earlier during the budget conversation. This is his resolution that we have in the agenda, on the agenda for this evening, that we have a copy of dated February 23rd. It's the legal memo that needs to go to New York State. This is not setting a levy. It's not setting the property tax rate or anything like that right now. This just is the technical calculation in the way that the state requires it to show the uh, maximum levy limit that we have of 2.85 and then that calculation. Correct, Lou? There's not that, we've got that?
The only technicality, it, it, the state comptroller website asks if you will be exceeding the limit. And we always put no, there's no decision has been made at this point. So it asks what the proposed limit would be. It simply is a pro forma. We put it as the tax cap levy limit at this point in time.
Okay, and we have that ability if we, if something circumstances change, we have
We would simply revise.
Right. Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone have any question or comment on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That fa- that motion passes, seven in favor and none opposed. May we have a motion, please, to approve a jewel agreement with a particular individual?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Christina. I don't think there's a need for additional conversation on this one. Pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes, seven in favor and none opposed. Then our consent agenda this evening, a motion, please, for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Karen. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Thank you. That's in favor, seven in favor and none opposed. Uh, board members, any other items of business for the meeting this evening? Dr. McGowan? That goes without saying. He says no. Again, just a reminder, folks, we're going to jump over, beginning at seven PM on our community forum. A week from tomorrow in the evening, we'll hold the uh, budget forum and all that information and links provided on the website. So I will entertain, please, a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of real property, please.
So moved.
Motion seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we are adjourned to executive session, seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you, everyone.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.